We'll begin with a prayer by Commissioner Palmer, a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Allen.
Would you play with me, please? Father, you are a righteous God and a gracious Father, and we thank you for this honor to work on behalf of the citizens of Anderson County. Would you give us your wisdom and would kindness be on our lips, and may we serve you and the citizens here well? In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Will you take the flag?
Salute. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. Anyone here to speak about an item not on the agenda can do so at this point, and just give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening and thank you. I'm Mary Nepper. I live in Andersonville. I'm pleased to have a little bit of your time. My question has to do with the proposed charter that will be on the November ballot. My interest is education, and the reason for that is this particular proposal originated -- I went back to my notes, it was 2016. That's pre-COVID. Do you remember life pre-COVID? I went to every meeting save one, and then COVID hit, and then I didn't go to meetings. I've been trying to inform myself so that I can inform other like minds, people who are interested in what we should do. And we don't know what we should do unless we're educated. So it's hard to keep up a website. The Charter Commission has a website. Some of the latest information is not there, but I'm hoping that this commission, because your purview would be the charter area, right? So unless we're educated as a public, we don't know what to do. This whole issue started in dissension, and I don't think we need to function further in dissension on it, provided we have the information and there's trust. And information will promote trust. So that's what I'm seeking. Now, I went back in my notes, and I found that the original reason for this change, it seemed so dramatic at the time and so fraught, was that candidates would have term limits. Now, by my thinking, that's called an election. So I didn't understand it right from the get-go. So then, once you have that little dissension and seed of doubt, it tends to grow if we don't have light shown on the -- shining on the topic. Then I looked at something else I had in here, and it says, "Do other governments have charter or home rule government?" Well, fine, but we heard Shelby Township and Knox Township, I believe, had a series of lawsuits, and I thought, "We don't need any more of that. That sounds like taxpayer funds going nowhere." What did term limits have to do with charter government? I really am confused about that. I feel thick as a brick when I think about it. I really don't know. To me, that's a term limit, and you vote the person out. What's the difference between limiting a term and voting somebody else in on that term? So I would like clarity on that. Does charter government give citizens or voters more input into their local government? Well, supposedly, yes. It would require a vote by people instead of a small group of insiders. I'm quoting here, and I'm thinking, "Wait a minute." For changes in grammar, I've been on bylaws committees. You change grammar, you change punctuation, you want to vote every time you fiddle? You're going to drive us crazy, right? You're going to drive yourselves crazy. So it seems like it would be a substantive -- seems the word substantive change would be in there. And then, do charter commissioners have the authority to enact changes in our government? No, the commission can only make proposals. So that sounds very reasonable on the assumption that we're informed. And I think everybody in our society can step up and be better about sharing information and undermining the distrust that undermines everything else. So I had, if you'll bear with me, just another minute or two, sir? Just another couple of questions. I would like a review if the commission will take this on, and I hope you do. Yes, we want to -- and I will help. If you want, you know, citizen volunteers, I'd be happy to help in any way I could. Because I will be telling people anyway. You might as well give me good information, right? So what are the reasons? The proponents who are behind the charter, and a lot of good charter work was done on that, it's 2016. Where are you now? What should we be looking at? Will you inform us on the reasons for this charter? And then, could you explain?
Ms. Nepper, let me let Jay chime in real quick. Can you give us an update on the educational material that's coming out? I think that'll answer a lot of your questions.
Yeah, thank you, Jay.
The Charter Commission has a meeting next week. I think it's Monday. Is that right?
And that's published, that's online?
Yes, and they will take up the educational materials. I know they're looking at putting out a pamphlet. They're going to do several public hearings. They'll publish the charter in several different locations.
Oh, it's unreadable. I've read most of it. The part I didn't read, I attended every meeting save one where every department -- it's legalese, you know that, sir. That's your forte. Just the departments that said, "Hey, same old, same old. Why do we need to change things?" That's what I heard. And so the impression I got was that the charter was fixing something that ain't broke. So the front end of it, yeah, I read, but as you got into the departments in that, it's a very long document. But anyway, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, sir.
It's all right.
Okay.
Come next week, and I'll explain it when you have time, okay?
And when you have time, right, yeah. The very last thing, I had two other ones. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Please.
You want me to stop?
Yes, please.
Okay, right, all right. Thank you so much. I'll ask the questions of our lawyer. Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else? All right, if not, let's move to the approval and correction of the agendas. Start with a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, can we move the nominating report to the --
Yeah, let's do that on the regular agenda real quick. Let's -- we've got a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll do the approval of the regular agenda. Commissioner?
Yeah, if we could move the nominating report to the --
Oh, dear.
Just, you want to do that before election?
Yes, please.
Item four, four A, I guess? Okay. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add the purchasing agenda to the agenda under six committee reports, if we can make that A.
Six A for purchasing. And, yeah. Commissioner McKinney.
Yeah, I'd like to add land purchase for the Beech Grove Lane Bridge to the agenda, I guess, under
Law Director.
Law Director's report.
Okay. Any other changes or corrections to the agenda? Motion to approve is --
Motion to approve as amended.
Seconded by Commissioner Val. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. We'll move to item four A, the nominating committee report by Chairman Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A nominating committee made on September 13th to fill the vacant holes in the committees the commission serves on. I would ask the body to move and accept these as a group.
Motion?
It's a motion to approve these as a group, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by --
Say.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on approving the nominating committee recommendations as a group? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, there's also, Commissioner Jaeger has indicated he would like to roll off of the IT committee, and I think Commissioner Allen has expressed interest. So I would like to make a motion to accept that nomination for Mr. Allen.
Nomination, motion to nominate Commissioner Allen to the IT committee replacing Commissioner Jaeger. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, the nominating committee did not make a nomination or fill the vacancies of the jail committee or the communications committee. Those are two committees that have not met in quite some time. Mr. Jaeger provided an overview of what the purpose and the original purpose and the structure of those committees were. The jail being when the new annexation and a new part of the jail was being built, this was more of an oversight committee of the construction of that. And then the communications committee hasn't met in quite some time, that now that the E-911 Board of Directors now oversees all the equipment that the communications committee originally was charged to oversee. So the nominated committee made a motion to forward a full commission for discussion of possible dissolving of those two committees.
Motion by Commissioner McKinney to dissolve
Yes.
jail and communications committee, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion on dissolving those two committees? Okay, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the nominating committee report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mays. All right, next, we'll move to elections and appointments, starting with the Industrial Development Board. Motion by Commissioner McKinney. Is that, seconded by Commissioner Isbell, is that to approve
Accept all three.
all three?
Yes.
Accept all three? All right. Any discussion on the Industrial Development Board appointments? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we've got Health Educational Facilities Board. Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Approve all three?
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the Circuit Court Appointment of Judicial Commissioners. Motion by Commissioner Val, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. For clarification, after discussing with the Circuit Court Clerk, their term expiration will be August 30 of 2026.
And that, your motion's to approve as a group?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, under committee reports, Robbie Holbrook, Finance Director, we've got the purchasing and budget reports.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. First, on the purchasing agenda, we did not have a purchasing committee meeting, so we have three items, and I'm going to take those individually. The first one is contracts approved by the law director. It's a Tennessee District Attorney General's contract. We were making $4,000 a month. The lease went up to $4,400 a month, so that increases our revenue $4,800 for the year. I need a motion for approval on that.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second one is a Canon Property Assessor Lease for a new plotter printer, which is a mat printer. It's a really large printer that, for a five-year lease, that's been approved by the law director also.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the last contract seeking approval is the new cycle county clerk contract. It has now been approved by the law director. We have it on here as pending, but I talked to Jay Dennight, and he has approved it. It's a five-year lease for two printers.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And also, for information purposes, we usually announce this at the purchasing meeting. We surplus two vehicles from the Sheriff's Department. The $2,015 Charger, starting bid was 500, the winning bid was $585. It had no transmission or engine. And a 2014 Ford Explorer, running condition, no rear interior, we were asking, starting bid was 2,000, and the winning bid was $7,600. So we did pretty good on that one. That's all I have for the purchasing agenda. Okay, for the budget committee minutes and agenda, first, the cash and fund balance report for the general fund, restricted funds. This is unaudited. All the funds are still unaudited until probably another month or so. Restricted funds are 1.1 million. Committed funds are 1,700,709 dollars. Assigned funds, 2,105,364, and an assigned fund balance is 12,75,197 dollars. Total fund balance, 17,027,983. And just some other funds of interest, 141 fund balance, 15,747,020. And the 263 fund, which is our employee benefit fund, is at 1,313,038 dollars. Any questions about the fund balance report?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Robbie, I'm looking at the general fund cash trends.
Yes, sir.
And in 2021, it looked like it was going up in July, August, and then the next couple fiscal years, it looks like it's going down, starting off. Can you tell me what happened there in 2021? Do you recall why the funds went up, revenue, cash?
I mean, we're at the same fund, I mean, the cash balance pretty much this year as we were last year.
I'm talking about 2021, I'm sorry. The green light.
Oh, 10,730, yes. We had a -- sales tax would be the answer.
Is that when it started coming in?
Yes, that's when we started internet sales tax collections for the whole year. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, the sales tax report for July. The county as a whole, 3,781,875. It was down 2% from last July. Anderson County's portion, 532,923, which was at 30% from last July. So that's the first month in three or four months that the county's portion has been up, but still, the sales tax is leveling off, but we're still, you know, making the same at least, I mean, it's staying consistent. Any questions on the sales tax report? Okay, no questions, I'll move into the budget amendments. Group two appropriations by the school department, there were four of them, three, four, five, and six, seeking approval as a group. I can answer any questions anybody might have.
Motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg, to approve as a group?
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Yes, Chairman.
Oh, Commissioner Val.
The purchase of land, Robbie, can you tell us where that is and what school it's for?
It's in Clinton. It's near Clinton High School, and there's not a lot of information because the seller has asked not to release his name, but it is in Clinton.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, they're going to build a training center there for, something they have at Anderson County High School already, I think, at the vocational school, that they're building, they won't have to bus those kids there anymore, and they'll have the same facility at Clinton High School now.
We're going to build a building on the piece of property. We receive a $4 million CTE grant from the state, and we're going to build a facility where we teach welding and industrial mechanics.
Thank you. Anthony. Any questions? Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Group three transfers by the school department, there was one for $23,043, seeking approval.
Motion by Commissioner Foster to approve, seconded by Commissioner Val. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group four appropriations non-school, there are nine of them, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, and 20.
Motion by Commissioner McKinney to approve as a group?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group six appropriations that affect the general funds and assigned fund balance, there are four of them, 14, 15, 16, and 17. The first three were all approved last year by commission and budget committee, that we did not get a purchase order or the contract. The work didn't get started, so we had, the money rolls back into fund balance, and I'm asking for that money to come out again to get those projects started this year.
Motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, in the group seven miscellaneous, section A was the TDEC ARP funds by Mayor Frank. Mayor Frank presented options for use of the county's $5,81,369 allocation of TDEC ARP non-competitive grant funding for wastewater, water, stormwater infrastructure. This also went before operations committee, and I think there was a resolution, and no action was taken in the budget committee, but I do think there was action in operations that will be discussed later on that. Section B, maintenance personnel, Mayor Frank presented the concept of sharing agreement for a carpenter maintenance position for various county facilities. No action was taken on that either. Section C, ARP funding for nonprofits. Mayor Frank opened discussion on budget committee's preference for addressing infrastructure funding requests for nonprofit organizations. A motion was made by Commissioner Smallridge and seconded by Commissioner Val to move the discussion to nonprofit committee with a $75,000 cap that would utilize funds from the unassigned fund balance.
Got a question from Commissioner White.
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Getting back to your TDEC ARP funds.
Yes, sir.
At our budget meeting, I didn't fully understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I was, I guess I was the one that requested that we send it to operations or we postponed it for 30 days. Well, after, after I realized and studied through it, it's a great move, and I understand that it's been through budget, so we can pass it at operations even though we didn't vote on and approve it at budget. Ain't that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Then that's what I'd like to see us do that tonight, is to approve this as the mayor presented. Thank you.
Thank you. So under section C, the motion that was passed for the nonprofits to go to the nonprofit committee, I need a vote on that, please. I'll read the motion again if you'd like. Commissioner Smallridge made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Val, to move the discussion to the nonprofit committee with a $75,000 cap that would utilize funds from the unassigned fund balance. And we will meet, I'm going to schedule a meeting for next month. I don't know if we, I'm not sure we need a vote on that, but
We'll go ahead and take one. Got a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner McKinney. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner White.
I'm very reluctant to put $75,000 in that account. We shouldn't, I don't think we ought to put a number on that until we decide what we're going to do. I think if, maybe if we put $75,000 limit on it, that's probably what we'll try to spend. I'd like to see us take each individual request as it comes in and deal with it on a one-on-one basis. That sort of concerns me when we put that much money aside to use for that. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mays.
Mr. Chairman, we're only voting just for this to go to nonprofit. It's not correct. We're not voting on any amount.
Right. There's no That's correct. And nonprofit committee passed a policy recently that any nonprofit requests, they submit an application to the finance department, and then it goes before the nonprofit committee, and if it passes there, it goes to the budget committee and then to commission. So it's going to go through three committees, or two committees before it comes to commission, if it's approved upfront by the finance, by me. So if they meet the qualifications that were in the policy.
So it comes to you first?
Yes, sir.
But are we voting on a cap tonight?
The motion had a cap in it. I'm not sure who, I can't remember who wanted that cap in there in that meeting, but
The reason I mentioned a cap was it would message to the nonprofit community that there is only a limited amount. There are a lot of nonprofits. Certainly, it's up to county commission what you would want to do, but I would anticipate with still millions left in your ARP funds, the reason this even came to you was because a couple of requests had come to us for ARP dollars for nonprofits. And so it was just a concept, and maybe you just put a realistic cap out there, and I think Commissioner Smallridge thought $75,000 might be a good starting point as a cap. Otherwise, you might find yourself flooded with nonprofit requests from all across East Tennessee. So that was just the thinking that was there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
And we're voting for what now?
We're voting to just
Send this back to the nonprofit.
Send this to nonprofit committee.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And for section D, new business, item 20 was a budget amendment that's already been passed under group four appropriations. And number two, we had a request from, for $2,510 in funds for the placement of a historical marker at the poor farm. Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner White, had passed to refer to Anderson County Board of Commissions with a recommendation for approval. I don't really need funding. I have it already in the budget, but I just wanted to make you all aware and to approve the funding, because you've already passed to do the historical marker in another county commission meeting, but this is for the funding now.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And also, under section EO, business, I provided an update on budget projects that utilize county ARP funding. I included that in your minutes. It's the last page of the minutes, which I'm trying to find right now. I have a lot of space to work here, and I always end up, yes. Did y'all see that in your minutes, though? It looks something like this. It's called ARP ARPA projects as of August.
22, I believe, right?
That is August 31st, 2022, yes. So of the 14, $14,952,074, we have a remaining allocation of $6,674,61.37, and the $500,000 that's been committed for the fraud ban projects. We now know that both of those projects were accepted, but, so that will go in, that leaves And I'll start updating this each budget committee, because we're getting down to the, you know, the last remaining funds for that project, for those, for those funds. Any questions? Any questions?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, on this 500,000 we set aside for the broadband.
Yes, sir.
What's the next process on that? How's that process going to work?
Well, actually, me and the mayor and Randy were discussing that today, we're not 100% sure if we are going to be writing them a check. Each one of them will get 250,000, but when their contract, I guess, is approved, the mayor might can explain this better than me, but we will write a check either to the state or to Comcast. We don't, we don't have that information yet.
Before the check's written, will you come back to this body for approval?
Yes, if you'd like, sure.
Well, I just want to make sure to know what we're going to get out of our investment. You know, I know there's.
I understand.
Many districts that don't even have infrastructure, District Four and many others, but I know in District One, we got some needs that I want to make sure get met at all possible, so I want to, I know it's not included, but I want to see if it will be included. So, I want to see what it is, we make the investment in, what we get in return, I guess is what I'm saying.
Sure.
I can interrupt that now, so I have spoken with both Highland Communications and Comcast. I've asked Comcast those questions, what specifically did they apply for, what would be covered, and then what additional investment in the community are they making, where it would open up other coverage. So, on Thursday, I'm supposed to get that information. On Highland, so I know from their grant, from Comcast grant application, I did not get as a detailed map, or I got what all of us did, Commissioner Wondell, you received as well. They provided a map, and when I asked for a breakdown, there was Hind Creek's road, Hill Road, Mount Olive Road, Lone Mountain Road, Sequoia Marina area, the Mill Creek, lovely Bluff Road, and then there is also some area where Comcast has some coverage, but also Highland has some coverage. So, there's going to be, my understanding, some crossover with Cambria Hollow Lane, Beech Grove Lane, Duncan Flat around Brown Cemetery. But there are other areas which I specifically mentioned to Comcast in my phone conversation where we have citizens who are regularly reaching out. So, if you have any of those, you know, let's make sure we get it in front of them, because they want to cover as many people as they can. So, I did apprise them that we would get them other addresses, because I don't know, haven't seen a map of.
Right.
They get a grant for certain homes or households that meet the grant criteria, which is either underserved according to the guidelines or unserved. But they also, for instance, with Highland, I know they're investing over $9 million in their expansion, but only $3 million is the broadband grant portion. So, for Highland, they sent a map, I could not open it today, because I asked, what is the other, of your $9 million expansion, what is that other area going to cover? Because obviously, citizens in that area, even though it's not part of the grant that the county's matching, they're going to have an opportunity for either choice or new service. But the grant portion, he has confirmed for me, is Highway 116, Graves, Graves Gap, which includes Brown Flats, Braden Flats, Duncan Flats, a portion of New River Highway, Cleve Lane, another portion of Bryceville Highway, 2800 to 3100, Seber Mountain, Tennessee Hollow, some of the higher addresses, Tennessee Hollow Church Road, Seber Mountain Lane, Braden Flats Road, Thistle Hollow Lane, Vow Mountain Road, Old Swag Church Lane, Upper Vow Mountain Road, Upper Vow Mountain Lane, and then a lot of houses in Beech Grove, 1,002 and higher addresses, Commissary Road, Cameron Hollow, Cambria Hollow Lane, Cameron Hollow Lane. So, that, they're firm on that, that was in their application, they said it was awarded. I don't have that kind of detail yet from Comcast, hope to have that Thursday, can report out to you.
I just, Burley Nelson Lane is what I'm looking specifically for.
And so, I did specifically, in my conversation with, with Comcast, I did specifically mention that one, and I was encouraged to get any and all, and they would do everything they can. The other thing is, I did ask about the process, both Comcast and Highland are not certain yet on the process, so they haven't even received their contract package. I did not know if that meant, from a procedural side, are we going to be writing a check to Comcast, are we going to be, you know, putting that in some kind of account with the state of Tennessee, as that's where the majority of that funding is coming. So, from a legality standpoint, we have to have something where we're authorized. I, normally, I would say, we can't write a check to Comcast, and Jay would say, you're not writing a che- a check to Comcast, it's going to have to be part of that grant, and we'll get that procedure nailed down, they don't know yet. But I will say, I do know Highland has already started, soon as they had notice, they were already out staking, doing whatever has to be done. Comcast told me that they wanted to fast-track this process, and I said, we are all about fast-tracking this process, so.
So, no money will be spent, you let us know when, when that process, we've allocated, you let us know.
Yes, yes. We did make the commitment, so that's part of the grant application.
That's right.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCamey.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've got a question on the budget committee, where that you had asked for a maintenance personnel.
Yes.
I'd like to know what, what that consists of, and why, why would it be a shared position from various county departments?
I, I mean, the mayor brought this before the committee, I can answer a little bit of it, and we have several county buildings that we own now that we don't have any maintenance at, that we're, we're struggling keeping up with the maintenance issues, one being the Health Department, the Senior Center, all the EMS stations, basic, you know, pretty much any county building that we own, but this is something that the mayor brought before the budget committee, so I'll let her speak about it, too.
This is an idea that I just brought to budget committee to see if they were interested and would be willing to entertain this. So, if, if they were, if there was some interest, I would bring it back officially to budget committee in the form of a more fleshed-out request. The issue kind of has started with the Health Department, where for the hourly, they had always had a maintenance personnel person, and they have just not been able to employ anyone, but then could not afford to pay those higher wages needed to recruit someone in this field. So, what we did is, we started talking about, well, maybe, you know, how many hours do you need a true maintenance, you know, person? And would you have the ability to share those duties with someone else, like Health Department, Animal Shelter, EMS, in, in terms of repairs and regular maintenance and custodial maintenance? And I know, you know, if they're not doing repairs or changing filters, you know, then they could help assist with cleaning, but as you know, from the Senior Center, a lot of times, we have seniors that are changing, you know, the bulbs or doing some of the maintenance, and it would be good if we could do a shi- maybe, it would be a cost-effective way of employing personnel without having to have one whole person at the Health Department or one whole person at another department.
It's a good idea, and I, I'll give a shout-out to our maintenance crew that we have here, I think they do an excellent job. I think they are very much understaffed, and I'd be glad to get this back on the agenda and come up with some numbers, but I think it's really worthwhile, but with what we've got, they do an excellent job. Thank you.
Any other questions for me tonight?
Commissioner Wondell.
Just one more, Robbie, on the IT infrastructure capital needs, 150,000 out of the ARP funds.
Yes.
What code will that go into?
It, well, all of it stays in Fund 121, and.
So, where will it go once it's allocated to do this IT infrastructure?
Depends on the nature of the project. We, we've been told we need to get multi-factor authentication for the, for all employees, for, and from Tennessee Risk Management, they've suggested that, so we're, we set aside these funds to work on that project, and other, some other IT infrastructure needs if needed.
We don't have an IT fund code, do we?
No, it's in 101.
Then.
But all these ARP funds, they all stay in Fund 121, we don't move them to the fund that is expensing them, we keep them there.
But then, don't all the depart, most of the, all of the departments have their own IT funding in their budgets as well?
Some do, yes. I mean, if they do have IT, if they do have that kind of funding, yes, they do.
I'm hopeful that the IT committee will explore the idea of putting all the funds in one fund, so we can start managing it better. Seems like, you know, there's a lot of pushing and pulling at times with IT funds, and.
There can be, yes.
People will budget it, and then you know better than anybody, they want to get IT stuff done, and they don't have it in the budget, then they want the IT guy to go put it in, probably his department, and there's no funds there, get mad at him, and then they get mad at you, because you won't give the money out, I guess. So, what I'd like to see happen i- in, in budget as we go along is explore the idea of establishing an IT fund.
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's all I have for my report, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got the, next, we've got Director of Schools, Mr. Deal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Greg Deal, for those of you who are new to the commission, I'm the Assistant Director of Schools. Dr. Parrott is out of town at a meeting, and he asked me to fill in and answer any questions that you might have. He also would, wanted me to take the opportunity, since I'm over school safety, and I've had many questions from people in the community and from some county commissioners and the mayor, about some of the things that we're doing to ensure that the students and teachers are safe in our schools. And I just wanted to give you a brief update on some of the improvements that we've made since last year. We have, we have a lot of different safety things in place already, but in the aftermath of the Uvalde shooting, we're doing some additional things, and I just wanted to update you on that. I have to be very careful about sharing specifics on certain things, lest I compromise the security of the school system, but I've thought over this and talked, and these are the things that we've done this year. We've entered into an agreement with a company called Status Solutions to implement an emergency system called SARAH that will enable teachers to push a button that's on, that will be on their laptop, that will notify 911, the, the school resource officer and administrators of an emergency immediately. Our school cameras will be connected to the 911 center, so that if and when we were to have an emergency situation, dispatch would be able to share with the officers and emergency responders specifics to the, what the incident is going on in the individual schools. We've entered into an agreement with a company called Care Solus, this is a company that will assist us to give a better mental health care delivery to our students. Currently, we have additional agreements with Ridge View and Cherokee Mental Health Service to access mental health care for our students. This new agreement will allow us to access mental health care for our employees and family members of the students. We've created school-level threat assessment teams, previously, we had system-wide threat assessment teams. In addition, all school administrators and school resource officers have received training on threat assessments. We've entered into a new pilot program with the Anderson County Sheriff's Office to help retain school police, school resource officers, and I want to compliment Chief Galloway and Sheriff Barker on bringing this initiative to the table. I voiced some concerns at the end of last year, because we were short some SRO officers, and they came up with this idea, and from what I hear from the SRO officers, it's very well-received, and I think it's going to be a successful program for, for both of us, and I want to thank them. All officers in the school, all, all SROs and school administrators have received active shooter training this, in the late summer, and stop-the-bleed training at the beginning of the school year. The school system has bought additional stop-the-bleed kits in place in the schools and also in the sheriff's, the SRO's offices. We just include, just recently, last week, completed an onsite safety audit at both high schools. This was provided free of charge by ESG, our energy management people, and we're awaiting the results on that, so that we can look to see how we can further make Clinton and Anderson County High School safer. We've also adopt, updated our anonymous online reporting system, which is called P3 Campus, with the assistance of ASAP of Anderson County, and we want to thank them for partnering and with us as well on, you know, making our schools safer. And lastly, but not least, Dr. Parrott has given each school their requested additional cameras to increase security at the schools. Do you have any questions about this or the report that's sent out each month to the, to you all about the activities that are going on in our schools?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you. Just a quick update about the lights there at Claxton's.
Commissioner Wondell, at the very beginning of school, I noticed, because I come through the Claxton community every morning, I noticed that, that light was off. I contacted our maintenance director, he contacted the per, the provider, the vendor that sold us that, it's parts, it's, we have asked and asked and asked, and Clay McCamey is constantly in contact with them, he's contacted other people to see if we can get the parts to get that, get that cam, those camera, those lights, excuse me, fixed. We're very much aware of the problem, and we are trying to get it fixed.
So, the parts are on order, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir, they have been on order.
Is there any way we could just hardwire them?
I can ask that question, I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert on that, but I can ask that question, yes, sir.
I'd like for them to check it out, see if we can hardwire it, because, you know, it took us eight years to get lights on Raccoon Valley.
Right.
And, you know, seems like to me the lights should work, and I'm, I'm not blaming you at a school, but it, it's kind of hard to believe that in today's times, we can't have lights that work when, after we buy them. And I don't know what the contract read, I didn't read the contract, but most contracts have things in there to kind of fix those types of situation, and I know COVID and the parts from China or whatever, and all those other reasons, but I, I think there's a will, there's a way. It sounds like the Anderson County Sheriff has stepped up, and I appreciate that from Sheriff Barker and everyone getting out there, hearing that there's tickets been issued, which I like, I think that always fixes the problem. But if you could look, check in the hardwiring, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I will. Just on a side note, the very first day of school, Director McBroom called me and chewed me out and said, why aren't these lights working? So, just what I'm, what I'm trying to communicate is, they've been aware from day one, and we, they communicated with us, and we've tried to fix the problem.
Oh, yes, and no way am I saying it's the sheriff's office.
Oh, no, yes, sir, I understand.
But I appreciate you sharing that, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate your comments on school safety, that's one of the top priorities, and it sounds like, just in the past year, you've had some great initiatives.
Thank you very much.
Nothing's more important than, as you pointed out, than our school safety, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we've got the county mayor, report, Mayor Frank.
Well, first of all, welcome to the new commissioners, so you must be a little bit nervous, because I'm feeling your nervousness. Or maybe I'm just nervous being in front of new commissioners. But welcome. My only action items on the agenda tonight are, I have several appointments, we can take those by group, or if you want to do them all together, they could be reflected in the minutes that way. So, all the appointments reflected from one through six to Regional Planning Commission, Public Records Commission, Anderson County Water Authority, E911 Board, and the Anderson County Economic Development Association.
Got a motion by Commissioner McCamey.
Take it, Mr. Root.
Seconded by Commissioner Foster, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote on the appointments. Let's go to the board and vote on the appointments. Motion passes unanimously.
And the only other thing I was going to say was congratulations and thank you to County Commission for matching and having the foresight to match grants in the community to provide broadband access. So congrats and thank you. And then lastly, I did put in your mailboxes, a brief letter on our TDEC workshop. I know a lot of you could not be there because of conflicts or sickness. But we did get some good news and I did want to share that with you all. I'll just highlight the one section. There are some bullets there that I put what the actual update is. And I did have TDEC actually sign off to make sure that my notes were accurate. And so if you all wanted to enter this as just a record, since we did not take minutes at that meeting or we did not have it recorded, we could do that as well. But EPA was on the ground at the American Nuclear Site performing initial screening for approximately three, three and a half days. The week of September 12th, they arrived on Monday and left on Thursday. EPA agreed to fund an assessment and site characterization of the ANC site. EPA will conduct sampling across the entire site and TDEC will review. EPA and TDEC will identify equipment and resources needed to remediate the site. The initial survey information will inform the larger evaluation to occur ASAP based on the availability of external resources, that is, equipment that will be needed. Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee General Assembly have provided TDEC new funding of approximately $22 million that will enable remediation of eligible sites and projects in Tennessee. And once sampling and equipment needs for the ANC site are finalized, there will be three potential paths forward. EPA continues funding beyond site characterization to full cleanup. TDEC collaboration with another federal entity or site cleanup and mitigation utilizing the state dollars under the governor's conservation and cleanup initiative. So I would like to thank Commission and Full Commission, Intergovernmental Operations, all the places. American Nuclear was discussed. This is a legacy problem, but this is absolutely phenomenal and excellent and outstanding news. So I appreciate our partnership, this county's partnership with TDEC, and I think that was one of the causes for a big win here. So I look forward to cleaning it up and cutting a ribbon.
Thank you for getting that together. And the word I remember Mr. Sanders said was guarantee, right?
He did.
Because I was there, yeah.
He, he did say guarantee.
Did you want to add that, did you want us to add that to the minutes?
I think that would, that would be beneficial to have a record of it.
Motion to Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add the motion here to add the American Nuclear Workshop letter presented by Mayor Frank into the minutes of this meeting.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Add that to the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell.
Hey, Mayor. Just one thing I want to say is thank you because after reading the email and the American Nuclear, you know, I'm a very emotional guy, especially for the, the new members. But, you know, the motions after reading that, because since 2010, we've been working on broadband for District Four and some of these other districts. We wrote, Jay's wrote resolutions after resolutions. But this is a way that county government works together. If it hadn't been for your input as well, and on this American Nuclear and Intergovernmental was sitting there one day, and, you know, and this has been an ongoing problem with the nuclear waste going into the groundwater and we said, we got to do something about this. It happened. I mean, that's great. So kudos to every member of this commission, the old commission, Mayor, and Jay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mays, did you have a question too earlier?
No, I'm good. I was going to speak on the motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. No, we'll move on to the law director report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the honor to be with each of you. I've got several issues for you tonight and we'll try to take these one at a time. Any questions on Section A of my written report? That's the contract approvals. Section B is your Anderson County zoning violations. There's two that have been resolved there in Pine Meadows subdivision. One newly opened and I believe there's been six new referrals that came out of our public meeting, our workshop there at the Claxton Community Center. The delinquent tax sale date will be December 10th at 10:00 a.m. That's an online auction again. Don't need to cover the bankruptcies in the desk. New lawsuit, the new lawsuit there is some citizens that are challenging the integrity of the voting machines across Tennessee. And that may be a situation where Anderson County begins with A, and so we're one of the first to get it. But I looked on the federal court system pacer and there's been several filed across the United States, very similar, similar language, but they're challenging the integrity of those voting machines that are authorized by the state of Tennessee. Mr. Stevens is in it with, along with Secretary of State Trey Hargit. We'll file a motion to dismiss on that particular case.
Jay, what would be their basis for that?
Uh, right now, speculation. They believe it can, the voting machines can be connected by an internet module, be manipulated off-site somehow. Our particular voting machine doesn't even have an internet module contained inside of it. But there is, I think, one in Tennessee. Williamson County uses it that does have an internet module, but I think that's part of it from reading the complaint. But I'll keep you up to date on that case. The lawsuit update, I've got a couple of issues here. As you well understand, the county filed two malpractice claims against the attorneys that have represented us for years under Tennessee Risk Management Trust. We've had to reassign some of those cases. Obviously, two of them that got reassigned is the Nancy Talent case, that's out of the sheriff's office and specifically the jail, and the Deborah Fettie case, that's also a sheriff's office case out of the jail. But the two other ones here that I want to mention to you are against Anderson County, and that's the Gil Harness case and also Amy Ogil. And I want you to understand that the mayor and I were forced into a situation where we had to agree to these conflict waivers for a variety of reasons. Mainly, the briefs due on the appeal of the Harness case were due September 8th. So we had to go ahead and sign the conflict waiver at that time, not on the Ogil case. The Ogil case, we're hoping will be dismissed or go away once we prevail in the Harness case. But we had to get this to the attorneys so they could handle it. And what I need for you tonight is to ratify that decision of the mayor signing that and me signing that so we can get these cases handled as soon as we possibly can and get the, the briefs have been filed. That'll be set for hearings. I'm not really sure on the Harness case, but I'd say pretty soon. So I need a, a motion to ratify the signature of the mayor on this conflict waiver. You do have a copy of that conflict waiver in your materials.
A motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, one abstention. Motion passes.
The, are you, were you voting on both Harness and Ogil?
That, that was your motion, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll move into Section H. You authorized me last month to close out the USDA loan for the Bryceville Volunteer Fire Department. They got a sizable loan to construct a new fire station. We have completed that. It's all done. It's wrapped up finally. And I really hope those gentlemen, ladies up there can enjoy that building and not have to worry about it. It was in terrible shape before they got their new building, but thanks to Commissioner Isbell, Commissioner Val, and the mayor, we're able to get a grant, a low-interest grant from the USDA to replace that building. So things are looking good. Commissioner Isbell, you want me to take up these items off the operations agenda? I think I've got three here for you.
You can.
Okay. The I is Oak Ridge Train, Fire Training Facility. That's an intergovernmental agreement that's been through operations last month. If you remember, you gave, I think, $257,000 to the Oak Ridge Fire Department to construct a training tower. What we did is put an intergovernmental agreement in place that all our rescue squad and our volunteer fire departments, along with emergency management, can utilize that tower, that training for training purposes, provided they have the requisite amount of insurance. And they'll have to sign off on that as well as the city of Oak Ridge. But that's before you tonight and we need approval.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea where that tower is going to be built at?
I really don't. Maybe somebody that's familiar. I, I would think it's on their training facility grounds now, but I'm not positive. Jerry, I'll find out for you, sir. Item J is the Blockhouse Valley Deer Hunt. You've got all those materials in your packet along with the map, along with the liability waiver and all that. Any questions on that? That is also on the operations agenda and it has been approved by operations.
Motion approved by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, one no. Motion passes.
One thing I would like to tell the public is, again, you register online, deerhunt.Anderson10.gov. If you need any assistance with that, call my office, 457-6290, and we'll help you with that. We'll conduct a drawing of all the people that apply for it. The mayor will pull the names out of a fishbowl. We'll assign those people, only two people hunt per day down there. And there'll be a youth hunt, a Saturday and Sunday, and only four kids with parents will be able to hunt during those days. I'll keep you posted on that particular item.
Jay, do you care to send that link out by email?
Absolutely not. We'll get that for you, sir.
Thanks.
Item K is the Arcadis Annual Report, and that's another legos, legacy issue that you may know about. It's right behind American Nuclear. In fact, as I've said for years, the American Nuclear site is the doorstep to the Blockhouse Valley Nature Preserve and outdoor classroom. This is Arcadis's annual report on that. It takes no action. I just want you to be familiar with that project. We've been in remediation down there since 98 and finally, a year and a half ago, got permission for our public to go back on that property. Hopefully, the 2008 resolution where County Commission decided to turn that into a nature preserve and outdoor classroom for our kids and walking paths, they'll finally come to fruition. So we're excited about that opportunity. But if you read through that extensive report, a lot of it's scientific information. If you have any questions, let me know and I'll try to figure it out if I'm not aware of it. Any questions on that?
Yeah. When are we going to be through with Arcadis? They've been on payroll since 1998.
They, I think we budget $32,000 for them. As long as TDEC requires, there's two wells that continue to show above elevation levels of arsenic and a couple of other heavy metals. Despite what people have said, there's been no nuclear material ever found on Blockhouse Valley. But as long as TDEC requires that sampling from those subject wells, then Arcadis will do that. Hopefully, we'll cut them down more and more each year. You've been on here a long time. You know their annual budget was a lot more than $32,000.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, it's at $32,000 and that's just for their site inspection, their monitoring, doing the interfacing with TDEC and those type things, or replacing the trees, the tool poppers.
So how often do they come and inspect?
Well, I think they're out there about every month. If any county commissioner wants to go out there and tour that site, please let me know and we'll get you down there and get you on some kind of all-terrain vehicle and we'll tour that site for you. It's a very interesting site, a lot of history to it. That's where the old poor farm was at. There was, Leo York just gave me a book about the poor farm. I'm going to read it and copy it for all you. It's a very interesting piece of Anderson County history. Also, it's the key to the rowing venue on our side of the river there, Milton Hill Lake. Hopefully, someday in the future, we'll see that. And certainly, all the activities we've got planned for the Blockhouse Valley Nature Preserve. But if anybody would like to come down there and tour that facility, just give me a shout and we'll get you down there. Anything else on the Arcadis report? Okay, L, this is a request that came out of the Operations Committee's resolution requesting TDOT to approve additional ingress access to the Brookstone Ridge subdivision. That subdivision is an existing subdivision off US Highway 441, Norris Freeway, just south of our industrial park there. Brookstone, I think, has 130 something. It's in our resolution there, lots, recorded lots. It's quite extensive. The developer tried to get an additional access point off Highway 441 to alleviate some of the congestion. And by his story, it was approved one day, denied the next day. We know TDEC, or excuse me, TDOT had requested a moratorium on curb cuts along that road. We've dealt with that before. Our new Glen Alpine Convenience Center up there, and we're fortunate enough to get one of them. But they denied this individual. Well, he takes this to the Planning Commission for his preliminary approval. That happened in April, April 12th of this year. He gets approval for that. We thought at one point that Planning Commission had approved another access point off Mountain Road. That's not correct. There's only one access point, and that's the existing Brookstone Ridge subdivision. So all that new traffic for another 82 to 90 recorded lots will come directly through that subdivision. It's, the roads are residential sized, they're not very large at all. So that additional traffic is going to cause a problem with congestion. It's also going to cause a problem that with kids playing in that area, it's a neighborhood with single family dwellings throughout, and a variety of problems. But anyway, we're asking TDEC here to reconsider that decision, or TDOT to reconsider that decision and allow the developer to build another access point along US Highway 441 that would be north of the existing Brookstone Ridge subdivision entrance now. That's what this resolution is about. Any questions about that?
Why would we want to do that?
Do what?
Get involved in this?
Because it's a safety issue and it's of traffic congestion. We're taking, what we're doing is, there's around 132 lots that are existing now. They're going to add another 82 to 90 and push all that traffic right through the subdivision as it is. And the gentleman that is, being the developer up there, he's requested the additional access point. As I said, TDOT originally approved it, then the next day, they denied it.
Is that from the present entrance there?
Yes, sir.
On toward Knoxville or back toward the?
Back towards north.
Anderson County, yeah.
Yeah, the, the new one, the requested one, we would ask for it to be north of that. That's where the majority of the subdivision will be. He owns that section. There's another section south of there that you might recall that's owned by a partnership out of Jacksboro, but that's not this individual. But that's what it's about. Any questions on this resolution?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, so have the people been notified? I mean, you mentioned running through the existing subdivision for an entrance to the back property. Has that already been approved?
Yes, it was approved April 12th, 2022. And they are aware now. They showed up at Operations Committee last Monday night.
Was, I, I mean, I'm sorry to ask these questions. I mean.
No, no, sir. It's okay.
Was the property posted like our new rules say? Were the neighbors notified with letters and all that kind of good stuff?
I, I would assume it was posted, but I do not know that, sir. I don't think we've got Daniel or Marge here or not, but we can find out.
Jim, and I think since it was already zoned, whatever was going to be zoned, there wasn't a change or anything. So I think that's, I, I know Commissioner Vandergriff's probably gotten the same, we've gotten, I've gotten a couple dozen calls and we had probably 15 or 20 people at. 15 or 20 people at Planning Commission and Operations both last week. So they only recently learned about their fairly low-volume road getting a cut through into it.
And they're in favor, all these people were in favor?
Well, they're not in favor of the, of the road coming in. That's why they'd like to see the change.
They'd like to see this resolution, additional.
The new entrance off of 441.
I guess my concern, Jay, is, I mean, I'm in favor of a new entrance. I guess my concern is, a new entrance off of 441 plus still coming through the neighborhood. I don't want to do that. I mean, so I don't, I feel like we're sending the wrong message here. I mean, I'm more interested in keeping the homeowners there from having this additional traffic, but I don't know what we do, and, Mr. Chairman, if we get with the mayor and get some feedback from zoning on what that process was, and were the people notified? And I hear what you're saying, that they're already zoned, and maybe they didn't have to do that, but that's not the way I understood the law. You know, just because they're not changing the zoning, I think people still have a right to be notified, especially if they're going to put more houses in there.
I don't believe that's under that particular provision that you're speaking about. This is a...
Well, it needs to be changed, because that don't work. I mean, I mean, that could happen to everybody.
And, and I don't mean to keep talking on this. I'll hand the gavel over if I need to, but the, my understanding from the residents was that the developer was, if he could get this entrance off 441, he would not cut into Cornerstone Circle.
How do we word that, Mr. Chairman? I'd support that motion.
Well, let me explain some things here first, before we go any further, and this is not going to be good news. That decision by the Planning Commission happened on April 12th, 2022. You have 60 days to appeal a decision from the Planning Commission. There's a piece of case law that says that 60 days runs from the time minutes are approved. So we're looking at May, July 12th. It's over with. That decision is done. There is nothing we can do at all, as far as that's concerned. The gentleman will have to come back for a final plat approval, but what happens here is, there's a provision in the subdivision regs, Butler's spot provision, the zoning regs, that he can go ahead and start grading with that preliminary approval. That allows him to start putting in, we've got bonds in place, putting in the utilities, putting in the stormwater, putting in the roads. We bond every bit of that, and that amounts to hundreds of thousands of dollars of damages. We don't have a case, the way it stands right now. This is entirely new to me. I found out about it last Monday night. That decision is over. He owned those two lots, the cut-through on Cornerstone Circle, to get into his new section, so it wasn't about getting additional property. Now, what, you're going to say, what can we do in the future? Well, we can control that speed limit through the Highway Committee. We can add speed bumps, things like that, slow the traffic down. That decision for him, for that preliminary plat approval, allowed him to go ahead and start grading and putting in those roads, the sewer, utilities, the stormwater, and every bit of that. So I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we've confirmed the dates, and that did happen back in April, and we're outside the statute of limitations to appeal that decision of the Planning Commission. It's rare that you see a commission body appeal a decision of a regional planning commission, but it does happen. It happens more frequently in Nashville and Memphis, those places, or the building commissioner will appeal that. But in this case, even if we tried to appeal, we'd be thrown out of court real quick, because we're outside the statute of limitations on that. But any questions on that? I know it's hard to take, but that's where we're at on this issue.
And you still requested that we approve this resolution?
That's what operations requested, sir. I'm not up here asking that. I think that's, that, this is for an additional entrance point to alleviate that congestion.
My concern is, if you have two entry points, I think it'd be ideal if somehow or another there would be not a, not a barrier, but maybe the roads not connect to where that you can come in this entry and go through your subdivision and come out this way. That's not going to protect the existing homes that's there now. The new, the new homes that he's going to build and this new entry point, that ought to be, in my opinion, one separate subdivision line. Because if you, if you connect these roads like this, you're going to have more traffic in this subdivision, and if you go up there, if you go up there and do pest control, there's kids all over these streets.
There is, sir.
And that'd be my concern, about the additional traffic coming through these...
Well, I think that was his desire, as Chairman Anderson mentioned, that he would not have an access point through the existing subdivision. But once that TDOT decision came down, rejecting his application for the additional curb cut, he was forced in. The only access point he had was to come through the subdivision. I asked him about going through Mountain Road, and he said that he doesn't own that property. It's impractical for him to try to have an access point out on Mountain Road. But that's where we're at on this. But this, I think this could possibly help him to some degree. I think some of the new homeowners would use the new access point if it is ever approved. And I, let me tell you, this is going to be a hard sell to TDOT. It was extremely hard for the mayor to get the curb cut in at our Glen Alpine Convenience Center up the road there. But in fact, I would say the probability of them approving this is not very good. But we'll try, and we'll try for those citizens up there. And if it, worse comes to worse, then we'll control as best as we can with traffic control measures, that we have the authority to institute, the speed limit, speed bumps, signage, things like that, and we'll do our best. But as far as this situation goes, it's too late to appeal that decision.
Commissioner Mays?
Yeah, Jay?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not really familiar with the law that Commissioner Wondell's referencing. I need to...
It's in our zoning resolution, as far as publication of rezoning and variances and things of that.
So where this road is going in, that I believe, if I'm correct, is when you first turn onto Cornerstone, right before you make that turn up to, up to the hill, to the top of Cornerstone?
Yes, sir.
It's going there, correct?
Yeah, going straight, those two vacant lots there.
I mean, do we have a duty, or do they have a duty, to notify those homeowners?
He owns those lots.
No, I'm talking about the house that's sitting right next to the lot that he owns, where that road is going to be going through.
Now, do we have a duty?
Or does the planning, or does this, does the builder, the contractor, have a duty to notify them? Hey, we're about to put in a...
No, most of them are very considerate. When the, I mean, this guy was one of the original developers. He knows these people. He built their homes, sold them a lot. So he's concerned about that. I know he is. But I don't think they could stop him at this point. He's got a preliminary plat approval from the Regional Planning Commission.
And you mentioned Mountain View Road. What?
Mountain Road, yes.
Yeah, Mountain Road, sorry. Is that, has that been a discussion, or is he actually sought after a way to make an entry point?
That was mentioned at Operations, that he added an additional access point there. He does not. That's behind the Clayton facility. I know you're familiar with that up there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, will we get an update on how the most previous Planning Commission meeting went? Because I know that there were a lot of citizens there, and I believe that the developer was there as well. Will we get an update on that?
I don't get their minutes.
I'm getting ready to do that.
They're not in our county commission, the BZA minutes, nor the Planning Commission are in their consent or regular agenda minutes, agenda.
Commissioner Isible?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's many facets to this. When it comes to Planning Commission, everything the architect brought fell inside the guidelines. There was nothing that was out of order about the request to put that road in. And it was talked about, for one reason, being, you know, an ambulance access as well. If you've ever been in that subdivision, they park on the roads, and I think it's very hard even for an ambulance to get through there, because they're parking on the road. So that was one of the things that, that was, you know, discussed, but there was not anyone there at that meeting to contest what he was doing. Now, he is actually the head of the HOA, because the developer, the way I understand it, will always be the head of the HOA until all the lots are sold. Is that correct?
Right, until, it depends on the bylaws and covenants, but that's the way it normally works. Then he passes it off.
Okay. So there wasn't anybody there to contest it at the time, so it looked like, you know, good, and the architect was there, everything went fine, like it normally does. And then when it came up at Operations, when they came, out of Operations came this motion to try to go to TDEC, or TDOT, and get this entrance approved off of 441, so he wouldn't have to open that up. And then when the neighbors of the residents came, we understood at Operations, we understood their comments at Planning. Now, there was preliminary plat approval, but not final plat approval. So, you know, it, like Jay said, it kind of puts us in a, in a unique place. And the best thing could happen is, and we're putting a lot of pressure on the mayor and the law director, because, I mean, they've really done some amazing things to get that entrance off 441. That would be the solution. But as far as, like Jay said, if we don't, I don't see anything, you know, Planning Commission didn't do anything wrong. And maybe there is, and we're working with, going to talk about that in Operations, because at this point in time, the Planning Commission is coming up with all new rules and going to redo everything, the wording, and this is something that can be added, that anytime any major changes to a subdivision, because we're redoing the subdivision regs, anytime something's done like that, where there's a new road, that would, it would have to be posted, like we do the rezoning. So, you know, we're learning as we grow. I don't know that there's a lot of things...
I think that's a very good idea. We can take care of that.
Yeah. But that's it in a nutshell.
Also, I wanted to, I think you're exactly right, Tim, and I appreciate you. I'm not implying that the Planning Commission did anything unlawful at all. As far as the final plat approval, a lot of the things that are listed on that final plat approval, you won't know until you put in the roads, the utilities, the stormwater. If you've ever seen a final plat approval, it has several different signatures around the edge before it's recorded, and those are the roads, the utilities, the stormwater, the building commissioner, the Planning Commission secretary, all those people have to sign off at that time. But as far as the grading, the construction of the roads, and starting there, that's already been approved. It was approved back in April, and there's nothing we can do at this point. That is a final decision. But anyway, I did create that resolution for you to consider that was requested out of Operations Committee. Here it is, and that's item L there, if you so desire to pass that. We'll put a cover letter with it and express to TDOT that our desire is to get another curb cut, another entrance in there to alleviate the traffic.
Mayor Frank?
Yeah.
Speak.
Just real quickly, an update. So I did reach out to TDOT and our rural planning organization about this after the Operations meeting. I had shared with Operations that I had reached out to them a while ago, and it's been over a year and a half, where I reached out along, about the safety issues on that corridor, specifically at that subdivision. There had been a lot of rear-end collisions, and they did agree to take a look at it, to review, to see what they could come up with. So I didn't realize it had been as long as it was, checked back in with them on it, and then I did not share with them that you all were entertaining a resolution, but I said that concern had bubbled up to the commission level, and there was a desire, there seemed to be a desire for another access point. So they did ask for that plat. I did get that in their hands. They're going to take a look at it and see. But I will also share, I try to always be at our rural planning organizations, and TDOT did, I guess, go through a, kind of like we're doing with our zoning regs, they're, they took a new look at all of their guidance. And they are minimizing the number of access points, and the reason being safety issues and safety concerns. And so they did ask that when we are planning, that we start on the front end and communicate with TDOT about any safety issues when the Planning Commission or the department or the building commissioner sees a large subdivision getting ready to come on board. So I did share that information a couple of months ago with Margie. For instance, with, there's a new development that's going to be built off of Long Meyer Road. We know right off the bat that when those folks come up onto Highway 25W, there's a blond hill and a curve. We know there's probably going to be some wrecks there. TDOT said, absolutely, we want to know about that now, so that we can get in front of it and try to put some, in place some plans. So they are going to look at this, but one of the things, you know, knowing that there are already safety issues on this corridor, I might, after communicating with Jay, I just thought about this, maybe we could add this to the resolution or not, you know, we could maybe put it in a cover letter. But I was thinking, be it further resolved, that if TDOT's safety reviews indicate additional ingress egress, will create additional safety issues along the US 441 State Route 71 corridor. We respectfully request TDOT's assistance in achieving safety improvements along this corridor, including possible partnership with Anderson County to achieve these improvements. And that's just a thought. I mean, if you're going to be putting 100 more people, whether it's a new access point, and it improves the subdivision, or whether they're going to have to come out the old access point, you're putting, you know, 100, another 100 homes in that area with how many drivers, and so we're just going to compound those corridor safety issues. So it might be worth, you know, while we're at it, asking them to, to improve that corridor at the same time. So that's just a thought.
You okay with adding that in your motion?
Yeah.
Commissioner McCamey?
Yeah.
Mr. Fuster?
Can we also add, where we, either a letter to legitimate government ally's office, Representative Reagan, Representative Wendell?
John Mark.
John Mark's in that area, so that we can get that letter of support from them backing this.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Anything else? Any questions on that issue?
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. As Mr. Lee, as Mr. Lee, I believe, the developer?
Yes, sir.
If TDOT does approve this, is he, I mean, has he stated that he's willing to wait to hear back from TDOT, or is he going forward?
I don't know. I can call him and find out. He's had his attorney contact me last Friday.
Any other discussion? Let's go to Commissioner Wondell.
Could you, tell me what the motion is?
To approve the resolution, sir, I believe, with the added language.
With the added...
Did, where? I mean, is the resolution in our package or something?
Yes, sir.
So the resolution states, Jay, to support a new entrance off 441? Does anybody got what page that's on in?
It's on your supplemental materials that we sent out today.
Supplemental. So that's another problem I got. You know, we can't get stuff the day of the meeting, then ask us to vote on it.
Well, I'm sorry, and I'm not, not arguing with you. I understand that. It was requested last Monday night, and this is the absolute first opportunity. It's been on the agenda. We didn't add it to the agenda, and by the time we worked with the developer, worked with Margie, we didn't get all our information on this until this morning. And I'm very sorry, but some things just work out that way.
Yeah. As county commissioners, that's what we have to tell the people when they call us. This is how sometimes things just work out that way, and it don't set too well with them when we tell them that. And for me, what's worse, Mr. Chairman, is, as a commissioner, you don't know about it until the people call you. It seems like we would know about it. Seems like we'd have known about this going to be cut in, and I understand it was... in April, I didn't, I didn't get the minutes. And after all, I mean, at that time, we're going through election. I don't, you know, transition to commissioners and stuff, so it, you know, it kind of gets dropped through the cracks. And that's what's happened here, in my opinion. And I understand they passed it in April, but, you know, I don't think the people had any say so in that. And that's the part that bothers me. They don't have any say so. And I don't know what the bond says on the existing roads. Does, is?
We've got bonds on the new roads, stormwater, utilities, and all that.
Do those bonds say that only a certain amount of traffic's allowed?
No. Those bonds are for construction purposes, surety, performance bonds. I've got it.
I haven't been able to read it, and I apologize. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to vote no on this. I'm in favor of a, a TDOT. You know, I, I just don't know. I mean, I, I'm afraid we, we do this, and then plus the opening comes in, and, you know, I, I don't know. I just don't know how to vote on this, to be honest.
I'd, I'd like to see, if possible, Mayor and Tim, to get those minutes from the planning commission and the BZA up to county commissions, so they can see the businesses going through those two entities. I think they used to, I'm almost positive, they used to be in our folders.
Margie sends us usually the, the agenda or something. We get something.
I see that, but I don't see the minutes.
Yeah, I don't get the minutes.
This is what it says. Resolution respectfully requesting the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, to reconsider its denial of an additional entrance to the newly proposed addition to Brookstone Ridge subdivision off US Highway 441, Norris Freeway, in an effort to reduce traffic congestion, eliminate possible injuries to persons and property, and further protect the health, safety, and welfare of all persons. Whereas Brookstone Ridge subdivision is a highly populated development with 132 recorded lots, the vast majority of these residential, residential lots have been approved with single-family dwellings. Whereas an additional 82 lots are proposed for the new addition approved under a preliminary plat by the Anderson County Regional Planning Commission on April 12, 2022. Whereas no other ingress access point has been proposed by the developer other than the main entrance to the existing Brookstone Ridge subdivision off US Highway 4041, Norris Freeway. Therefore, all new residents residing in the newly proposed and authorized addition will be forced to utilize the main entrance to Brookstone Ridge subdivision. And then the existing streets in Brookstone Ridge subdivision are heavily traveled and are utilized by pedestrians and traffic and plain children. These are known hazards and will escape, escalate with additional vehicular traffic, increasing the chances of accidents and injuries. Now, therefore, be it resolved with the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session this 19th day of September 2022, that we respectfully request the Tennessee Department of Transportation to reconsider its denial of a previous application for additional ingress egress point along US Highway 441 filed up by the developer. This new access point to the new addition will greatly reduce the traffic congestion on the existing roadways inside the Brookstone Ridge subdivision, but will also decrease the chances of property damage and serious injuries to the residents of the subdivision, their children, and guests. That's what it says.
Chairman, so are we, are we, is the maker of the motion going to add what the mayor suggested?
I think it's already added.
He agreed to that.
All right. And then if that's going to be added, I'll support this, because I, I want, for those people, and I'm sure the commissioners that represent that district want a, a different option for the people there. So, I'm, I'm going to vote for this, even though I don't like getting it the day of and then trying to vote on it. But I understand, Jay, it happens sometimes. So, I'll vote for it with the hopes that the developer does not have two entrances, just the one.
Yes, sir. I'll express that.
Any other discussion? Let's, let's go to the board and vote. And I got a text reminder for commissioners to speak into their microphones, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item U, as I told you earlier today, we've stricken that. We thought we would have another chance to send this back to the planning commission on the roads and utilities. We, we're outside the statute of limitations, and that's not going to be, that's really a moot issue. Got the courtesy resolutions already done. Item O was added to the agenda tonight. That's the Beach Grove land purchase from Wind Rock. Wind Rock is the now name of Coal Creek Mining and Manufacturing, the Coal Creek Company. They have now transitioned into Wind Rock. The subject of the Beach Grove Bridge has come up here many times, I think, over the past year. The state came in, inspected it, and reduced the weight down to three tons, which we can't even get a school bus across, much less any commercial type traffic. Mr. Long has gone out and started work on a new Beach Grove Bridge with the money that you funded. And we had Robert Campbell and Associates do the engineering work. They looked at it, and we don't own enough property there to put the new bridge in enough to build it the size that we need to. So, we contacted Coal Creek, and they got back with me this afternoon at four o'clock, said they would sell these two parcels of land for $10 each. So, we've got $20 in it. That will be adequate to construct the new bridge, according to the engineers. Also put a construction easement and a inspection, maintenance perpetual easement in there, so we can access over and through their lands from now on to access this new bridge. The new bridge, Coal Creek asked me this question. Of course, it's now rated at three tons. The new bridge will be rated at 40 tons, and that's classified as unrestricted under TDOT standard. So, that's a pretty hefty bridge. But anyway, what I'm asking you to do tonight is to approve those two deeds and authorize myself, the mayor, and Chairman Anderson, Mr. Long, to sign those, accept those from Wind Rock Mountain. And we'll get that moving and hopefully get that bridge started as soon as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner McCamey.
Jay, do we need to appropriate $20?
I've got it. And if it takes it, like we did Slate Stone, I'll get it out of my wallet.
It's a dollar and a quarter a piece, guys. Come on.
Exactly. We'll take care of that. We've got the money ready.
That's a good answer. We got the money.
We don't often have that, Jerry. You remember the days when it was pretty thin. Any questions about that transaction?
Let's go to the board and vote. You're done.
Mr. Long, talk about how long it'd take to complete the bridge?
No, he hadn't mentioned that to me, but.
There he is, right there.
What was your answer?
Been on the contractor with their schedule. We hoped for him to get started about in six or eight months, you'd be able.
Be great.
Motion passes unanimously.
Couple of other little things. You know, we've got an opioid case, several of them out there. A couple of them have been resolved, the bankruptcy issues. But we passed another one, what I refer to as a severe county case, that was against local drugstores and retail stores that have pharmaceuticals, grocery stores. You remember this one. Two Ohio counties filed the same exact lawsuit against these same entities, except one of the grocery stores that we have here is not up there. And I don't know if you saw that, they received $650 million. I'm sure that case will be under appeal, and that is in northern Ohio. And what makes this interesting is, number one, it's the same theory of a public nuisance that we filed under a public nuisance claim. But it also is interesting because that's still the Sixth Circuit, okay? We are in the Sixth Circuit for the federal district court. So, this precedent would possibly apply to our case if they were against that point. So, we're holding our breath. I've spoken to the attorneys that filed that case for us, and no guarantees whatsoever. We might not be able to prove the damages that these counties did. But I thought that was very interesting. It's the same theory that we proceeded under, same type defendants, mostly all retail. And these are not the middle people. These are not the manufacturers. These are the people that actually selling the prescriptions to the customers. The other thing is, Mayor, I really want to tell you how much I appreciate that American Nuclear. That's, I mean, I can't tell you. I think I've been dealing with that for my entire career up here. And like, I can't, I can't even think about the number of letters I was requested write by the Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Wendell, county commission. It seemed like we were at a dead end over and over and over. EPA, American Nuclear, we sent it to the state. I talked with the state numerous times, every new administration. But the mayor got everybody together. And if you were at that meeting, I have to say it was extremely positive to me. And I actually heard the word guarantee, and I actually heard the word commitment. And those are the words that I took out of that. So, Mayor, thank you so much. The, I don't know if you heard about this, and I know Tim is aware of it. We had the Mayor's Cup softball game this past weekend, and Anderson County prevailed, thanks to Tim and our team and sheriff's deputies. And it was a hard fought game, I have to admit. I thought they, they came ahead of us in, what, the top of the seventh? But we played on and won the game 19-18. And Tim, I don't know if you're as sore as I am, but I'm, I, that was, that was pretty rough. But anyway, thanks to those folks from Clinton, they were great sports about it. I think they were. But, and also our guys and gals, they did a wonderful job. I, I had no idea. We had guys that could hit a softball that far, but we do. It was a lot of fun, and hopefully we'll keep it going and pass that trophy back and forth each year from Clinton to Anderson County. And it was all for charity, and all the proceeds went to United Way and other charities in this area. And also, the businesses got behind, behind it with some drawings. It was very nice. Subway, Harrison's, to name just a few. But thanks for all the folks that came out and participated in that. And then hopefully we'll keep that going for years to come. Any questions on anything I covered? Any questions on any legal matter that Anderson County is facing? Any questions on anything that I can answer for you? If you have no questions now, please contact.
I also want to mention our property assessor. I also played in that game.
Oh, boy. He wasn't at work today, and I called to check on him. He was at, he was at a, a retreat down in, for all property assessors, so he, he's not hurting. But I didn't realize Tim could move that fast, and Johnny too. But those guys were athletes at one point in their life. But thank you, guys. Any questions? I appreciate y'all.
What I wanted to do is mention too about the progress of the bridge. Commissioner Allen, myself, had been working with State Representative John Mark Wendell, and actually wrote letters to the state because they dropped it from 30 ton to three ton, which don't let the school buses go across. But every day, there's, you know, heavy equipment going across that 38, six, nine tons. And then when we start working on this bridge, this equipment to work on the bridge, they're going to have to cross that bridge. So, you know, it really don't make sense.
It did.
At some point, we asked, you know, we did, we went with Jerry and the sheriff. We went, there we did a video and sent that to the state showing really the construction of the bridge. I mean, it's a heavy duty bridge now, and just to drop it down to three tons. Because we've talked about this in the meeting, because we've got these people that live up there, and, you know, they have to get, they have to take their school kids down there three times a day to commute buses, according to which rates they're at. But I really do appreciate the support of this committee.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right. Next, we've got committee and board reports. We'll start with operations committee report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, is TDEC ARP funding. Commissioner Anderson made a motion to approve resolution number 22-09-952, allocating a portion of Anderson County State Designated ARP funds to the cities of Clinton, Doris, Oak Ridge, Oliver Spring, and Rochester, as presented, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed unanimously.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mays made a motion to approve resolution number 22-09-952.
I have three. Operation Green Light for Veterans, seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Motion passed unanimous.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
And on that, what that is, is that's where we're asking for the courthouse and, and the county offices to actually shade the lots, the green, the windows. They're doing this. This is one of the things to come out of that NACO committee that I serve on. They're doing this all across the United States. The state of North Carolina has voted to do it at every government building that they have. So, it, it's a way to actually honor our veterans from the state local. Thank you. Next is the Anderson County Government 2023 Holiday Schedule. Mr. Anderson made a motion to approve Anderson County 2023 Holiday Schedule, seconded by Mr. Allen. Motion passed unanimous.
Motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution of being the consolidated fee schedule to include a pool fee for rescue organizations. Commissioner Allen made a motion to approve resolution number 22-09-952, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Motion passed unanimous.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Smallridge.
I just, I noticed a fee schedule listed in, in that document. It's, to the general public, it's $85 for a dog, $50 for an adult cat, and $75 for a kitten. And I know that's not a lot of money to many people, but to some people, it seems to me it, it may prevent them from wanting, from being able to adopt an animal. And I was just wondering, of course, one of our goals is, is to get the animals adopted, to get them into a, a decent home situation. And I was wondering what impact that fee might be having on the ability to, to adopt the animals. Just, I guess, I'd like to hear a comment on that, or if there is any.
That is something, it's been a long while since we discussed that. We've had that in place, I believe, since maybe 2017. I can definitely ask the Animal Advisory Committee to take a look at that, do a comparison. I know that I've personally looked at surrounding shelters and then also surrounding states. If you can believe it, in some states, there's actually a $450 adoption fee. And, but they also microchip the animals and, and do a little bit more. I, I know, having worked in the animal welfare world since I was young, part of an adoption fee is also part of the process where you don't, you don't want an impulse adoption. You, you want someone to also think about what they're doing. It is an investment. And then they are getting spay neuter. It is actually, all, all of these costs are at, you know, if you went and had all the vaccinations and the spay neuter, that's actually a savings, this amount. But we can entertain that again. I know with the, the pool fee, one of the things I mentioned at operations that I would like to see us take a look at is developing a policy where maybe we can waive fees. And so, for instance, if it is, you know, seven feral cats come in and there's a barn program, we're probably not going to get someone who's going, going to want to pay a pool fee. But if we had a waive, you know, waiver process, and they were a verified 501(c)(3), we could do that. So, I, I would like the committee to look at that again and, and discuss that as an option. Then, as another mechanism, Commissioner Smallridge, we do have people who make donations. And so, for instance, on senior dogs, a lot of times we'll get a donation specifically for a senior dog. So, we had someone, for instance, in honor of someone who had passed away, they donated $30 towards the adoption fee of a senior dog. And what we do is, the team will put that on a list, and then they will, when we have a senior dog, they will share that with a potential adopter, that that's a, a way to discount and go towards that animal. And then we just make a note of that. So, there's an explanation of why, why it was reduced for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's, if you could take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
That was all of the action items. But under O business, we took up street signs at Carol Holla area.
But under O Business, we took up street signs at Carahalla area, the Claxton area, Hillvale, and Lovely Bluff. And that's the signs that's going up to try to prevent tractor-trailers from going over there and getting stuck. So, we had discussion about that, and what would have to be, you know, to be enforced. So, I just wanted to put that in there for all the residents. And that concludes the Operations Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Next, we have the Animal Care Advisory Committee report, Chairman Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Animal Care Advisory Committee met on September 6th. We're happy to have the new Animal Shelter Director, Mr. Damon McKenna, and the vet consultant, I guess, Mark Garrett, were in attendance, just kinda listening in. We really appreciated them being there, they gave tremendous feedback. I'd like to compliment the mayor on the hires here of Mr. McKenna. He's very knowledgeable and very confident in the way he presented himself and his direction for the animal shelter for Anderson County. So, very, and everyone in the committee was very pleased as well. And Mr. Garrett, who certainly knows a lot about the animal shelter business. So, that was good. We had a motion made by Vice Chairman Newby to form a subcommittee with one member of the advisory committee chairs. The committee under media relations to handle a point of contact for advisory links and rescues, to recommend animal shelter then form a master list to submit before the mayor, before the 45-day evaluation period, seconded by Lauren Boloski. I'll make a motion on that one.
And a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to remind the commissioners that anything that comes out of this committee goes to the mayor, and she has 45 days. It's not required, she has to do our recommendation. We're just trying to help. And I liked some of the discussion earlier. And Commissioner Smallridge, there was actually some discussion in the meeting about the fees. And what I heard from those discussions is the fees aren't really a concern for them. There was actually some discussions about raising them. But again, I think the committee is gonna go with the mayor and Mr. McKenna and Mr. Garrett on what their recommendations are. But I didn't, I didn't get the sense that our fees were preventing anybody from adopting any. And it looks like there's gonna be a major focus to help get these animals into those organizations to help place them, you know, too, as well. Next, there was a motion by Lauren Boloski for disclosure of all financials and the budget for animal care control and any special funding that was set aside, seconded by Veda Oberlin. That motion passed.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Again, that's just to help understand what the limitations are, whether it be a new animal shelter down the road. We understand what the funding in place is at the time. Next was a motion by Stephen Newby that we support the mayor with all avenues of use of AARP money and finances for the progression of benefiting the shelter in any method possible, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Motion passed.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next meeting will be October 4th, 6:00 PM, Room 118. That concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business? Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was fortunate enough to have lunch with the governor, Dennis Powers, today. And he talked about some of the good news about the state of Tennessee. And we're number one in the lowest tax rate of all 50 states. We're number one in economy in all 50 states. We're number one in fiscal responsibility. So, that's really good, to be number one right here in the state of Tennessee. And remember his wife, First Lady? She's, uh... Got some medical issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Isbell, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder for those that might be able to make it, the Tennessee County Commissioner Association Regional Meeting is tomorrow at the East Tennessee Historical Museum on Gay Street. Registration starts at 5:30. The meeting will begin at 6:00. There's no charge for this, for us to attend. You get fed, and you get educated on local things happening in the state. It's a good turnout, and it'd be really nice to have all the commissioners we can, and the mayor, anyone that can attend. I know it's short notice, but it'll be tomorrow night at the East Tennessee Historical Museum, starting at 6:00. And one other item, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, the Claxton Volunteer Fire Department will be having music at the ballfields there in Claxton. That's Saturday from 2:00 to 8:00. Gonna have some country music out there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any O Business? Commissioner Palmer?
Yes. On October 1st, Saturday, at 9:00, there will be a prayer walk for the Anderson County. Anyone can attend. It's for the community.
Thank you.
It will begin behind the Darty Building and end at the football field.
Thank you. Any O Business? All right, we'll see everybody knocked over.